And I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Mr. Heinrich, Rob, if you would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, sir, I would, if all would please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Rob, thank you very much. Jared, I think it's time for roll call.
Yes, sir. Barb Barker? Tammy Blank?
Yeah.
Cindy Broad?
Here.
Julia Tamaki Kukuro?
Present.
Tom Harley? Mr. Kerr?
Present.
Mrs. Leeper?
Present.
Mrs. Lowry?
Present.
Mr. Schroth?
I'm here, and you may want to call Barb's name again.
Barb Barker?
Here.
He's here. Mr. Harley? Well, maybe we'll just watch out for him, sir, to see if he does come in, and I'll mark him present.
Okay, Jared. Good evening, everyone, and thank you again for attending our board meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody for here this evening. And I have a brief President's message that I would like to read. Several months ago, this board collectively set a milestone of having those teachers and staff that want to be vaccinated inoculated prior to any further discussion on fully reopening the academic programming of this district. To review our current status, grades pre-K to five are open to in-person instruction five days per week for almost all of those parents that selected this option. Grade six is open to in-person instruction four days per week with one day remote. Grade seven and eight are open to in-person instruction two days per week and remote for three days, with approximately forty percent of those students attending four days per week. Grades nine through twelve are also on a two-day in-person and three-day remote schedule. I am pleased to announce that by the end of this week, we should, and I want to emphasize the word should, meet that milestone, having inoculated all of the teachers and staff that want the vaccine for grades pre-K through eight. These vaccines are being distributed in accordance with the priority directives as established by Governor Wolf. I am also very optimistic that within the next two weeks, we anticipate having sufficient number of vaccines to inoculate all of the senior high teachers and staff that want to receive the vaccination. Expecting to meet this board-directed milestone within the next two weeks, I believe that it is time for this board to again consider the question of whether or not we should move from our current model under which we are now operating to one of bringing any and all students who want to return back to in-person learning five days a week for grades pre-K through five and increasing the number of in-person learning days to whatever the board could decide for grades six through twelve. To that end, I am asking our superintendent, Mike Vukovich, to do three things. First, complete those surveys and/or data collection that he and members of this board may deem necessary in order to provide this board with accurate information facilitating our discussions. Second, that he prepare recommendations on how and when we can increase the number of days per week for in-person learning. And finally, I'm asking him to prepare a motion for our next scheduled board meeting, March twenty-second, 2021, for this board to deliberate, discuss, and ultimately direct the administration concerning the board's collective desires in this matter. Thank you. Uh, Jared, do we have any public comment this evening?
No, sir, we didn't receive anything.
Okay, IAEA, ASME, SGA, or STUKA, or we have any members from those organizations online tonight?
Hello, Mr. Schroth, it's Paul McHugh. No IAEA message tonight, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Anyone else? Um, Mike, do we know if our newly appointed student representative is on the call tonight?
Yes, sir, I believe he is. His name is John Jack Fisher, and I see him on the call. I see him, his name identified, so I think if you want to introduce him and recognize him, I believe he's on the call, sir. John, is that you, I believe, sir?
Yeah, I am on the call.
Okay, he is on the call, Mr. President, if you want to recognize him.
Okay, John, thank you for supporting this board. We do value the input from students. Um, would you, would like for you to give us a brief introduction as to, you know, who you are and where you are in your scholastic career?
Uh, sure, I'd be happy to. My name's John Fisher, but everybody calls me Jack, and I'm a senior at Indiana High School, and I'm on the golf and basketball team, and I'm part of SGA and IHJ's leadership, so we're in, we're in full swing. It's a busy month for us right now.
Okay, make your comments and your introduction, thank you. And, um, at this point in time, I'll turn the meeting over to Mike for his superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick updates. Number one, I also want to join and welcome, welcome, Jack, to the student rep. We had a committee, I'm sorry, Comprehensive Plan Committee meeting last in January, not last month, but the month before, and part of it included students, and some of the biggest, best insight we got from our Comprehensive Plan meeting was hearing the students talk about their perspectives and their thoughts, so I think Jack will offer great input to this board moving forward. Uh, speaking of comprehensive planning, Mr. President, on Wednesday of this month, we'll have our second meeting. Uh, and this focus of this meeting is going to talk about values, right? And we're going to talk about value statements and vision. What do we see ourselves as a district? What are some non-negotiable thoughts, processes, and really refers around culture? First meeting was about equity. This meeting is about culture and value and vision statements, and we're going to spend time looking at crafting that. Uh, to reiterate your comments on the vaccine updates, we are in the process to continue moving forward to get a portion of our staff vaccinated and getting ready to go. We administer surveys, so we have an, we identify who's available for the first wave, and we're looking forward to working with Department of Health, the IU twenty, and the Pennsylvania Department of Education to get that done and get people inoculated for those who wish to have it. And we're hopeful that by the end of the month, those who want access to the vaccine are able to get access. Lastly, Mr. President, on a personal note, I do want to congratulate all the moms, all the women's, all the women on this call today. It's my understanding today is International Women's Day, and I think for far too long, we haven't, as a society, recognized women who've done so much for their community, for their families, and for their children, and for the general good. Uh, these women have put everyone else's needs ahead of our own, their own. Uh, we're all grateful for what you do, celebrating, and I'm being quite serious when I say celebrating their strength, their courage, their passion, uh, to not only serve in the role as, you know, you're talking business leaders, you're talking civic leaders, but you're also talking as a mom, you're also talking as a wife and as a daughter, and some, coming from someone who had Aunt raise him all his life, I could not be more grateful for the strength and courage that women put forward every day in this world, and sometimes unfair world, right? And I didn't create that world, but I'd be ignorant not to recognize it. Your level of care, you know, one thing my aunt taught me, uh, don't ever take carelessness as a weakness, right? Care, caring means telling enough people, telling your kids when the answer is no, right? Caring means you love them even when they make mistakes and give them second chances. Uh, I'm grateful for all the opportunities I learned from all the women in my life. I'm grateful for my, for my wife puts up with me. Uh, I talk about a strong woman, she's one of them. Uh, but the ladies and the women on this call and this board need to be recognized and honored to serve you, to work alongside you, and thank you for the time and passion and commitment, uh, that you put in. Oftentimes, when I go home, my, my wife's doing the heavy lifting, and I'm grateful for her, and I'm grateful for all of you, and I just wanted to recognize you because you do a lot. I know we meet a lot, and there's a lot to be done, and I'm just thankful for all your leadership. With that, Mr., with that said, Mr. President, I'll turn it back to you, sir.
Here, here, Mike. Uh, thank you for that report. Ron, looks like you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a quick update. Uh, on March first, the governor did remove restrictions for the travel, uh, so there is no more travel quarantine in the, in the state of Pennsylvania. He also increased the venue capacities to fifteen percent indoors and twenty percent outdoors, uh, and that's regardless of the venue size. So those were changes that allowed to ease restrictions on some of the events. Uh, moving forward on that note, uh, we also want to share that our firm has been working, regardless of, of, you know, what the decision may be from, uh, your students, your board, your community, uh, we wanted to give the opportunity to everybody. So our board, our, our firm's been working with the insurance carriers, uh, to start trying to develop some waivers and to really just make sure that we follow all protocols that remain in place, uh, as we look towards potentially having graduation, prom, and things of that nature. So we have worked with the insurance carriers, getting their parameters to make sure that we can cover these events, uh, and getting some waivers drafted to make sure that we can cover these events, if that's the choice of districts moving forward. Again, not saying you have to, but if that is your choice, we wanted to make that available to all of the districts that we represent. So that is something that we're looking for, uh, moving forward. That, without it, um, that's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Okay, I don't believe there's any presentations this evening.
No, Mr. President, there was not, sir.
Okay, so we're down to approval of the minutes and the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from our past meetings and, um, the agenda for this evening, please?
Seven. Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion? Nothing heard. We'll vote in the negative on this, on this group of motions. Anybody objecting to, to accepting them, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The chair assumes unanimous, um, approval. Okay, board reports. Uta, looks like you need the Technology Center.
The ICTC, um, did not meet in the month of February, and we are meeting, um, on the twenty-third of March. So I have no report.
Okay, thanks, Uta. Barb, what's going on over there?
We did not have a meeting for the last month, and our next meeting is March sixteenth, so I'll have a wonderful board report for you at the next board meeting.
Okay, thanks, Barb. Tom, academic and extracurricular?
Okay, we had a meeting on March first for the, for the committee. Uh, covered a lot of the waterfront. I'll jog through. Mike, jump in when I, when you need to clarify, or I don't cover it correctly. Uh, we talked about the IUP speech and language summer support. Um, contract would be less than a twelve hundred dollars. Uh, the committee supported that. We found an opportunity for IUP literacy interns. Um, Mike only brought six. We said, how many can you get? Um, it looks like on the agenda he has twelve. Um, that's a wonderful buy. That's a lot of time. Um, that'll, that'll really help us, um, going into, uh, 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 cleaning up some of the disaster from the pandemic. Um, we talked about the safe schools. Um, and, um, I believe, Mike, you wanted to use some of the funds for, um, for an assessment, which we haven't done for three or four years, so this committee supported that. Um, we doing a, asked for permission to file a grant for four thousand dollars with AASEA, um, an impact grant. Um, Mike, can you explain that just a little bit?
Yes, sir. American Association of School Administrators is issuing a grant, six grants throughout the, throughout the country for about four to five thousand dollars that focus on social emotional learning projects or initiatives. And what comes along with that is additional coaching from nationwide experts. Uh, we thought we put our name into the, into consideration, and that's what you're acting on tonight, sir.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, we discussed the calendar a bit. Um, the ICTC still hasn't finalized the calendar. I assume that's still true. Um, five of the seven schools are starting on the day we're starting on. Uh, we're hoping that the ICT will slip to, uh, to our dates. Um, we juggled, we recommended juggling the President's Day to President's Day, and, um, I think that was about all the changes that we're looking at at this point. Um, is that on the, is that on the agenda, Mike?
I believe it is, sir.
Okay, very good. Um, Walter mentioned the, um, uh, the survey that, that we're putting out to the top hundred and fifty employers in the county, um, and trying to gather the data so it can be analyzed, and, uh, we're bringing, we're coming down the home stretch here. Uh, the art teachers reviewed the new art curriculum, um, which is a substantial difference. Um, primarily, uh, the old curriculum was a media-based curriculum. You do painting, then you do drawing. They're going to do, um, they're going to introduce, um, all the medias throughout the, um, throughout the, uh, the children's experience in art. Um, the committee, uh, um, approved that also. Talked about the state assessments. We're all kind of grumpy about it, but we have to do it. Um, so, um, uh, we thought that, uh, doing it as late as we can in May would be the best. Uh, and I, Mike, is that a, is that a motion? Are we, are we okay with that?
No, it doesn't need to be a motion. What we're going to do is just, you know, communicate with families later on this week or in the next week, um, as we continue to plan on it. But yeah, we're, we're probably going to look at the late May. Uh, again, it was, it was extended to the, um, fall, sir, but we had discussion academic committee meeting. The, the committee struggled to find value disrupting a kid's entire, uh, next year with two, set two, you know, high-stake exams in one year. So we're looking at end-of-May testing, sir. That's what we're planning on, and we'll have to communicate shortly with families, sir.
Yeah, and, and the hope is that the PD comes to their senses and doesn't take those construction days away from us, but that's a pretty, that's a pretty remote hope at this point. Um, we talked about the Wednesday remote days at the, uh, at the high school, junior high, about, about why they were there, what, uh, what we could do about them, um, and found where there's very little we could do. Um, the, um, making a major change in the schedule just wasn't financially or academically recommended by the committee. Um, we talked about some of the problems with the kindergarten class size. We have a waiting list of eight students. Is that still true, Mike?
Sir, you cut off for a minute. What was the last thing you said, sir?
The, uh, we still have a waiting list for eight students in the kindergarten?
No, we're good, sir. What we did, we did some internal moves. All those kids' families who wanted to come back are able to be back. What we did, sir, long story short, we just collapsed some of our asynchronous and synchronous classrooms, changed rosters, and that allowed us to free up a teacher, so that classroom is up and running. We are good to go, sir, and I apologize for not communicating that.
No, that's, that's okay. The, um, I'm, I'm glad you took the initiative to get those kids back in our buildings. Um, we had a extensive talk about the summer school, uh, for the, um, planning, which is coming together. Um, uh, we have, uh, over two hundred students, uh, that are more than interested in it, uh, most of them interested in both sessions. Um, um, Mike's still talking to basically everybody in the, in the, in the county to, uh, for partnerships, and it's an always-evolving, uh, event here. So anxious to see what it finally shows up, but it's certainly not fixed in place yet, but we're getting closer. Um, it's also, um, still under budget, which is just great. Um, we talked about, um, the IC renovations extensively with the principal, um, what she was using rooms for, um, got a real good, uh, detailed feel for how, how the building would be used. Um, I believe that was, uh, passed on to, uh, to buildings and grounds and to the architects. So we're hoping to see some good, good come out of that, that, that experience. Talked about, uh, expanding the civics requirements, uh, what we could do, what, what we should do, um, looked at several options. Uh, um, we heard an update. We'll, we'll bring this back around and talk about it some more. And then we had, um, updates from each of the buildings, um, and we went home by midnight. So, so we have a couple, um, um, motions to make tonight. Five-eight through, five-nine through five-two. Is there anything on this list that we need to bring up individually?
Yeah, can we pull out five-three, please?
Okay, anything else need to be pulled out? Okay, hearing none. Um, I'd like to move that we approve five-two professional development, five-four literacy graduate assistance, five-five Center for Safe Schools, five-six SEL impact grant approval, five-seven act eighty days, five-eight twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar, and five-nine planned course study adoption be approved as submitted.
Second.
Okay, we've got the motion and second. Uh, do we have any questions, comments, or discussion on, uh, all these, uh, motions except for five-three? Uta, your mic's hot. Do you have something you wanted to add? Okay, Mike, is there anything you'd like to, um, um, explain or, or, or provide any additional information on any of these items?
No, I think one point to clarify, Mr. President, is the literacy interns, we doubled it after question from the academic committee. But please know that we'll be using our federal funds to help pay for those costs. When you look at the COVID gap, you look at some of the costs that are, were going to occur, that's exactly what this money's for. So we're excited to get twelve people, up to twelve people. I had a conversation with Dr. Ankrum. She's helping, and she's fairly confident she can get me twelve, but if we don't get twelve, we'll be paid for what we got. So we're going to shoot big, and like the committee recommended, and we'll see where it lands. But this is going to go a long way when we start talking about closing those barriers and eliminating some of those gaps. This will go a long way, uh, to do that, sir. So I'm, I'm glad of the good work of everyone and the support from the committee, and, uh, I'm ready for you to take these, uh, and, and have my, my full support, sir.
Walter, um, I do have a couple of comments, mainly in that most of the board was present at this meeting, uh, most of the administration was present at this meeting. We started about five-thirty, and we ended about ten. Um, um, all these items were discussed in detail, um, and I really appreciate the hard work that the, uh, committee members and the board's doing, um, um, on this, on these academic items. So I, I salute all of you. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then we'll go ahead and, uh, vote in the negative on these. If you are opposed to, uh, uh, accepting these motions, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The chair assumes that they all passed unanimously. Okay, five-point-three, Tom.
Five-point-three is the IUP Cooperative Agreement. Based on the recommendation of the committee, the board approves a cooperative agreement with Speech Language Pathology Services with Indiana University of Pennsylvania to provide literacy support services to students during the summer of twenty-twenty-one. That's good.
Okay, moved in, moved in. Second, um, does anybody have any questions, comments, or further discussion on five-point-three?
Um, yeah, I, um, just want to, um, let y'all know that I need to abstain from voting on this because I, um, work for the office that will be administering, administering this, um, contract agreement for IUP, and I don't want there to be, um, a sense that there's, um, a conflict, so I will be abstaining. But that has nothing to do with whether or not I think this is a great opportunity, both for our students and for, um, the program at IUP.
Okay. I'm sorry. We certainly understand that. Uh, Tom, Camera, I think you had her hand up.
Go ahead, Camera, please.
Um, I also have to abstain because I work in the Speech Language Pathology Department at IUP, but I also, um, support this, but don't want any conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Tom.
Mike, what's the cost on this?
It was less than twelve dollars, sir. It was about, uh, one thousand one hundred and seventy for the three weeks in the summer. It was, uh, it's a great part of our plan, and we're, they're a great value partner. So I, again, it has my full support, sir.
When Mike submitted this to the committee, I thought he made a decimal point mistake. So this is, this is a phenomenal thing. Um, the committee also encouraged him to find a similar um, group of people that could help us out with the second, second semester, which IUP students are not available for. So I hope you're still digging into that, Mike.
We're not there, sir, but we're working, I promise you.
Yeah, this is, this is great for our.
Okay, thanks.
If I can just say one more thing, this is also a great opportunity for the students at IUP. So I think being part of that department, I'm very thankful for that. Um, they're getting a phenomenal experience, and many of our students want to work in the schools, so this is a great partnership and a win-win for both parties.
And, and Mr. President, if I could add to it, and Ms. Leeper, if you can just, you know, support it if you so choose, this is a great example of partnerships, right? When you talk about community, uh, partnerships, this is a great example of partnership that's aligned to the evidence, not just hodgepodge, not just good intentions, but based on evidence, based on sound practice, designed to help fill in the gaps that kids have and get them on a path towards successful reading. So it's not just by happenstance, it's by hard work, both on the board, but also IUP's part. And it's an example of what a community collaboration should look like. Do you agree, Ms. Leeper?
I agree, and this has been such a journey for me because, um, although speech pathologists work with literacy, I have not done a lot of that in my career, and I actually attended a webinar this weekend put on by David Kilpatrick, which is one of the big gurus in literacy, and we are doing what he recommends, and it is just so exciting to see that happening in our community. So hats off to Mike, too, for, for bringing us the research-based reading instruction. Um, it's a very exciting time to be here. So kudos to your team.
Julia, you've had your hand up a couple of times. Uh, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Schroth. Um, I had the question about the cost because I, I couldn't believe it either, and I agree. I just think it's really one of the most exciting things that's happened at our district for, for a long time, um, and it will be of great use to the students. So thank you very much, Mike.
Okay, are there any other questions, comments, or further discussion on five-point-three IUP Cooperative Agreement? Nothing heard. Um, let's go ahead, Jared, and do a roll call on this because we have two abstentions.
Certainly, sir. Tammy Blank?
Yes.
Cindy Broad?
Yes.
Julia Tamaki Kukuro?
Yes.
Tom Harley?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeper?
Abstain.
Mrs. Lowry?
Abstain.
Mr. Schroth?
Yes.
Barb Barker?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Jared. I think that concludes academic and extracurricular. Uh, we're down to, uh, number six, policy and personnel. Uta, it's your turn.
All right, um, Policy and Personnel Committee met, um, this evening, and I want to thank everybody who attended and participated. Um, we discussed, um, the literary and the literacy graduate assistance that we just voted on. Um, we had some conversation about staffing for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year and, um, creating an additional artistic classroom and, um, which will, um, come to the board on the twenty-second. Um, we had some conversations about, um, summer school staff, um, which the board had previously authorized the administration to build a summer acceleration camp for students in grades K through five. Um, and, uh, Mr. Vukovich and his team have been diligently working on that and will be bringing us additional information at the next board meeting. Um, it seems that we have, um, about two hundred students who are interested in participating in such a program. So, um, I think that also speaks, um, highly of the quality of the programming, um, that we've been able to provide throughout the pandemic. Um, then we are going to do first reading of policy oh-oh-five, which is going to, um, clarify, um, the role of community members to serve on board committees. Um, and we are adding, um, some language to just clarify that. Um, and then we're also doing first reading of policy one thirty-seven point one, um, which is a, um, recommendation based on changes to the National Defense Authorization Act for twenty-twenty-two regarding home education students. Um, so for legal liability purposes, that change is recommended. Um, policy one fifty, um, we're going to do the first reading, um, and it is, um, just minor changes in language, um, which are required for school entities receiving Title I. which are required for school entities receiving Title I funding. And then we discussed the process in place to replace our supervisor of buildings and grounds as he has announced that he is retiring. And discussed that we currently are conducting a national search for that position. Did I miss anything?
No, Ms. Lowry, you did incredible job. We're good.
Okay. Do we need, can we take 6.2, 6.3, 6.4, and 6.5 all together? Okay?
Yes, you can, Ms. Lowry.
All right. So I'm moving, pardon me?
Yep, I was just saying, yes, you can. That's all.
So I move that we accept motion 6.2, 6.3, 6.4, and 6.5 as written. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion from the board members on 62 through 65? Okay, nothing heard. We'll vote in the negative. If you oppose any of these motions, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The board chair assumes that they all passed unanimously. Okay, I think we're down to audit and finance. Jul, oh no, I'm sorry. Buildings and grounds. Terry, you're, you're up.
Nothing for tonight, just a meeting next week, next Monday, 15th.
Okay, thanks, Terry. Okay, Julia, now it's your turn for audit and finance.
There we go. Thank you. Could we scroll down through the motions real quickly just so I can, because I don't have a printout of the agenda, please? Okay, so we have the donation, the website, the act of wireless technology. And the tax collector. Okay, that's it. All right, thank you. We did have a meeting last Monday night, very short, for about 10 or 15 minutes. And that was regarding the tax collector motion. So we had a little bit of an education in the law at that meeting, so that resulted in the motion tonight. The current, tonight will be, hopefully approving the current bills. Jared, I was just going to ask you, there was a large payout on the, I think there's about $650,000 of bills. But there was 100, I think, $92,000 that went out to CNP or something like that. Was that benefits or what was that for? Or was that for the payment over at East Pike?
If it was, let me take a look. If it was CNC construction, that would be the general contractor working at East Pike.
Okay, that's not our final.
$192,809 to CNC, which is, like I said, the general contractor working on the new office at East Pike.
Okay, is that our final bill?
Uh, no, no, they're not. There, we still have some punch list items that they're working on. We will not pay their final bill until we're happy with all of that.
Okay. All right. So I thought the bills seemed relatively what we've seen before. That was the one that I was curious about. At our other, at our prior meeting, we had been very grateful to Dr. Jill Erman, she used to be a member of our community, for this wonderful donation she gave for $5,000 for our high school and junior high music department. And it's really going to make a wonderful hands-on experience and much needed. So that motion's on the adjust agenda. And then there was some comments. Jared, if you could talk about this purchase before we do the motions, the purchase of those wireless access points? Because I think it's pretty nice what we're doing here.
Yes, ma'am. We are looking at upgrading some of our wireless access points across the district and also improving our wireless access in some of our buildings. What this purchase does, and it allows us to take advantage of a 60% reimbursement through the federal E-Rate program, which is something that pretty much everybody who uses cell phones, internet. We all, as consumers, pay into this federal program that supports schools, libraries, non-public schools as well to upgrade technology and enhance education through technology. So we are allowed to participate in that. And because of our free and reduced amounts across our district, we, as a district, receive 60%. So this money is budgeted in our technology budget, which Mr. O'Neill manages. So the total bill is $34,000. That's what we will issue a check for. But then we will receive 60% reimbursement after we submit all the required paperwork through the E-Rate program. So it really is a good deal to go through this program to take advantage of the funding.
Okay, thank you. So I think we could, unless there's an objection, we can take all the motions together tonight. Okay, hearing, hearing none, we're gonna be, so I move, oh wait, we're going faster. So 8.2, what was 8.1? That was just the committee report, right? I can't see this. Okay, so 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, and I move 8.4 and 8.5.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, 82 through 85. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion on any of these items from the board members? Julia, did your mic still hot? Did you want to add something else?
No, I'm sorry. I just can't think and.
Okay, all right. Anything else from any of the other board members? Hearing none. Again, we'll vote in the negative. If you wish to oppose any of these, please say no or nay at this time. Hearing none, the chair assumes that all those motions passed unanimously. Looks like we're down to the closing at this point. We have no discussion item for this evening. Is there anybody out on the call that has a public comment on agenda?
For Mrs. Schroed?
Yes.
My habitual request for, in the name of transparency, any, more than just one or two, or description of any executive session topics if held this evening in item 9.4 on your agenda. Thank you.
Walter, you're muted.
You're, you're on mute, Mr. President.
Okay, any other comments from the public at this point? Hearing none. Ron, I will defer that question on the executive session to you since you.
Yeah, not a problem. I, I did not hear his first comment, so if someone caught that, I don't, I don't think it was for me, but just in case. Certainly, yeah, the executive session was held. It was the applicants on the building and grounds manager, as well as, we talked about personnel related to, find the agenda items, 6.2, 6.2 and the other personnel items. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that we talked about. But I believe that was it. It was the, the applicants and the termination provision of 6.4.
We did talk about a contract issue, I believe, Ron.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Then a contract issue update on the architect contract. And that was all for, and again, I, I did not catch his initial comment, whatever that was.
He was just simply looking for more than just a one-word description of what our executive session covered.
Oh, I, I thought there was something prior to that. I'm scared.
I just mentioned that I'm into what happened. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, thank you, everybody, for that. We did have some enclosures. We did have an executive session, which Ron covered for us. Our next board meeting will be March the 22nd to discuss general purpose items. We have three committee meetings coming up. Buildings, grounds, and transportation next Monday, the 15th. Audit and finance on the 22nd. And we do have an outreach committee scheduled for March the 29th at all at 5:30. May I have a motion to adjourn? All right, it's been moved in second. And anybody objecting, we adjourn. Thank you very much to everyone for attending this evening.
Thanks, Walter.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.